All right, I think I heard Trustee Phoenix on the line before.
Present.
Very good. Okay, everyone. Oh, it is 2:07 PM on this Tuesday, June 10, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Hall.
Present.
Vice President Mayberry.
I'm here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix.
Present.
President Smith.
Here.
Trustee Westlake.
Here.
Clerk Woodley. All present at the counter for Madam.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have an important person in the audience, and of course, everyone is important, but this person really helps connect everyone to their health care benefits, and I appreciate her greatly. Mackenzie Howren, will you please lead us in the pledge?
United States of America, and in two republics which stands one nation under God, and in the gospel of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mackenzie. That brings us now to item 1.04, the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Ni'wi, Western Shoshone, and Nu'uwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connection to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. That closes item 1.04 and brings us now to section two. These are our consent agenda items. And prior to this meeting, we do have a request to pull item 2.12 by Trustee Westlake, so we will be pulling that. And I have not received any other notice to pull any other items, nor do I see any lights on. So that means that we have before us an opportunity to make any comment that we would like before we go to public comment on items 2.02 to 2.11, and then 2.13 to 2.24. Are there any trustees that would like to make any comments on any of the other items? Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. I think it would be nice if we heard exactly what services are being provided for under 2.05, because I know I was ignorant as to exactly what services those were, and I was going to have it pulled, but when I heard what it was for, I'm like, this is really good, and I think it'd be nice for the public and everyone else to hear what services are provided for under 2.05.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, because all that you're asking for is to just make sure that there's clarity and understanding for that.
Yes, thank you, in the long way.
Yeah, absolutely. So that item, what she's actually referring to is item 2.05, and so these are for the positions that are related to occupational therapists, speech pathologists. Is that correct? Yeah, audiologists. Yes, indeed. And so thank you for bringing attention to that. Yes, these are not mental health professionals. These are language pathologists, audiologists, occupational and physical therapists. So these are different types of roles that service our kids and maintain our standard of service that we have to provide, both due to federal and state law.
I wanted to add on, I had the same question that Trustee Westlake had about this, and I think it's just really important to note that while we definitely always want to employ people in-house, a lot of these positions are contractual in that they're only used here and there, and not used enough to make, at least in my experiences in schools. So I just want to throw that out there, that I know that the superintendent and his staff always do as best as they can to ensure we're hiring people when we can, but it sounds like, based on the feedback we got from this, contracting is the option for these positions, as far as my understanding goes. Okay.
All right, JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 through 2.11, or 2.13 through 2.24?
Pablo Nava Duran for item 2.22.
Welcome, Mr. Nava Duran.
Hello. Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Nava Duran, and I did check 20 years plan for Washington School District facility plan for 20 years. If you look at the numbers over there, on during 2038 to 39 school years, the school district expected to drop, have a total number of 49,000 students, and 770 students. Like, this is so low. And I was not surprised that there are declining women, but I was surprised at how low this enrollment is. We're about to increase by 38% in next 20 years. So we got to think about what the facility model, what the smart plan for a woman, all kinds of stuff. Because if you build like a new high school over there, like for Worcester or any else, don't care what school, middle school, elementary school, you build a new school, and then the enrollment about to drop, and they have 60% next middle school year, like five years later, five years from now, they have new school, and then 20 years later, later, this school district will decide to close that, that our facility down, you know. You don't want to waste any time, you know, we have budget cuts, so we want to make sure we have smart planning to do, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nava Duran.
That's all I have.
Very good. All right, I'll bring it back to this board, and I'm looking for a motion to approve items 2.02 to 2.11, and items 2.13 through 2.24.
So move, Madam.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Clerk Woodley, a second by Trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on or hands up, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. I think that was an aye, right, Trustee Phoenix? Trustee Phoenix, was that a vote aye in the affirmative?
Yes. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Very good, all right. All right, all those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. Now, we will move on to the one item that we've pulled, which is item 2.
President Smith, I am so sorry. It could be my hearing, and I apologize. In that motion, it was 2.02 to 2.11, and 2.13 to 2.24?
Yes.
So 2.12 was not in that motion?
That's correct, because it's being pulled.
Wasn't it just discussion?
Oh, so we, both Trustee Hall and Trustee Westlake wanted to make a statement that they had understood about it, that they wanted to share on those items, but they weren't necessarily pulling it. So it was just general comments or discussion on any of the unpulled items, and they were sharing, if I'm correct with this, that they did some research on it, they came to an understanding, and they wanted to share that understanding with the public.
So, okay.
And that was on 2.05.
That's correct.
2.05, okay, thank you.
All right. We took the motion, and I got the ayes. Yeah. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a brief recess, and we'll be back in just a moment. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take a brief recess, and we'll be back in just a moment.
All right, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. We're gonna bring everybody back here. All right, it is 2:44 PM on this Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And now I am going to invite and turn it over to our Chief Legal Counsel, Neil Rombardo.
Thank you, President Smith. We're just gonna create a record on why we took a recess, and sorry to the public for the recess, but we needed to clear some things up. Basically, online, we had the correct agenda, and we had the correct agenda posted in our foyer where you walk in, in the visitor's center. Unfortunately, we had a printout of a paper agenda that was, had a slight discrepancy. We fixed that. We've checked all the websites and everything, and all the all the notices were correct, so there's no open meeting law issue. However, I am gonna recommend to the Chair that we redo the vote on Item 2, just so everyone is clear on what we're voting on. For the public, there was a misnumbering at around Item 2.12. We did verify that everything is correct now. The correct agenda has been placed out in front for the public, so I don't see an open meeting law issue, and I think we've corrected everything. That was the reason for the delay, is we just wanted to double-check every single place where we have to notice the public on our agendas. So I think we're ready to go, and I know that we pulled Item 2.12, so we'll still consider that, and that item is the award of the bid for Hers Middle School. Thank you. And so that item will be considered separately, and we've already taken public comment on the consent agenda items that are going to be considered first at this time.
Very good. So just to recap, we will still be pulling Item 2.12. That's the award of the bid for the restrooms at Marcy Hers. So I will bring it back to this board, and I am looking for a motion to approve Items 2.02 to 2.11, and then 2.13 to 2.24.
So move. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, and we have a second by Clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. That brings us now to the one item that we do have pulled for discussion, and that is Item 2.12. And that is the award of bid number 25-101-B-04-D-A, general use restroom improvements at Marcy Hers Middle School to SI legacy floor finishings in the amount of $580,000. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us today our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Smith. So for Item 2.12, which is the general use restrooms at Marcy Hers, we had significant vandalism and damage in those restrooms to where they were carving into the drywall through in into the other stall area. And so this puts a fiberglass portion in there, so that cannot happen, and we find it a safety issue to do that, so that's why we're recommending this to be approved. The dollars for that are coming out of what was budgeted for Marcy Hers initial building. So it's not coming out of capital renewal or any other funds. It is coming out of what was budgeted initially for Marcy Hers.
So I'll defer to Trustee Westlake for her questions on this, or any clarification.
Thank you, President Smith. So, well, silly me when I first saw this and saw the name of the company. I thought it was floors, but that got strained away. And then I was looking at the the cost for, is it fiberglass? Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Fiberglass or vinyl?
So it is a fiberglass plate that then gets a methyl-macrolate cover over the top of it. So it's similar to what you'd see at our new Procter-Hug and those general use, and it is a more hardened surface that they can't, it takes a lot to vandalize. It's easily to clean. The other thing is, if we leave it the way it is and just patch it, we worry about sanitization and cleaning of it.
Okay, so, and I did ask, when I thought it was the floors, is this a safety issue? So that answers, even though it's not floors, it's walls, and I can appreciate that the $580,000, although I know you guys advertised to get bids, but there still is one, only one bid. How many bathrooms are we talking about here?
It isn't all the general use restroom stalls at Marcy Hers.
How many is that?
And I'd have to
Roughly.
I'd have to go back and count to give you a rough idea. I'd wanna say there are at least 50 to 80 stalls that this encompasses, because you're thinking about all of those wings of the schools and the multipurpose room.
Are we, and I know this sounds like it's a little off the agenda, but I think it's important. Are there cameras? Are there cameras showing who's, not inside the restroom, but who's going in? There are cameras there?
This is off the camera. They're not off the camera. This is off the agenda.
Okay, I'm just thinking
But it is okay to say
$580,000.
I think it is
We wanna make sure it's not the
I do too. I think it is okay on this item, and I'll say that I'm disappointed that the students here cause such extreme vandalism. So I understand it. I support the item, but I am also terribly disappointed that the students are now, due to their vandalizing behavior, requiring that their school pay nearly $600,000 for that. So I think it's fair to say that it's a disappointing situation.
It is disappointing. And then just moving forward, you said HUG has this. Are all our new schools going to have this basically almost indestructible material?
We have changed our operation due to a lot of these and finding this out, that they do get that MMA and that hardened surface because of this.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, same concerns that Trustee Westlake have. I mean, look, when I see a new school spend over a half a million dollars for restrooms, it gives me pause. This is a really big pill to swallow, and I tell you what, I'm gonna reluctantly support it, but I was coming in here really with a no vote on it. So, and it's not a, certainly not a criticism to you, or I'm disappoin our students as well. I, but it does pain me to see, you know, these kinds of contracts for new schools, reinvesting this kind of, you know, this kind of capital improvement dollars. I know it's not coming out of the general fund, but it's still taxpayer dollars, and so I was really on the fence. Thank you.
I can appreciate what my colleagues are saying, and I also know historically that right after Marcy Hers opened, I was a trustee at that time, and students found out very quickly, and I agree. It's like, I'm sorry, this is not how you behave. Having said that, it is how some, a very small portion, small portion of students behaved, and they found the weaknesses, and to move forward quickly, and I know that at the time, Principal Brandon Bringhurst worked very hard on this, and I know Facilities was constantly trying to help and mitigate, and it really did get to this point, and it came down to custodians also having some concerns about being able to clean it, maintain it. Students did misbehave, and it is not acceptable. And it's one of those lessons learned, like we did with HUG, and like we will continue. And it just, it happens with our facilities. It's not just bathrooms. We learn lessons all along the way, and this is one of them. And sometimes you just have to outsmart some people, and this will help, and hopefully things will stop, and the money needs to be spent because it's a constant challenge.
Yeah, I agree. My vote today is not in support of the students that managed to incur nearly $600,000 worth of damage, but rather in support of the custodians who are responsible for cleaning this, and they are also responsible for the health and sanitation of the new walls. And so I definitely support them with that. And thank you for answering the question about the principal having addressed these things. Do we have any public comment on this, JJ?
I have no cards for this item.
All right. This is for consent agenda item 2.12? Can you, all right, we'll have you come up and speak, Mr. Navaduran, but then can you please make sure to fill out a card? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hello, guys. My name is Prabha Duran, and I did sub at Marcy Hers. You know, they're great kids. One here, you know, I think the few kids who have misbehaved caused a lot of damage on Marcy Hers. You know, I'm was surprised for this. Yeah, I don't go sub here heavy often so much, so. So it's a very damaging, I have a million dollar to refurnish, to clean up the damaged bathroom, and a many, many of the students were eighth grade going to high school. Like, this is unacceptable, you know? That's like minor damage compared to, you know, high school happened a couple weeks ago. You know, that's caused a lot of taxpayer money, not such much here, but so, you know, high school as well. So I wanna make sure to have have a fiber grass at the new Von Mills School, because it will have, if we don't have a new fiber Von Mills School, it will cost a lot of money. So, thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Navaduran, can you fill out one of those cards for that? Thank you so much. And so just to answer to that, it sounds like this is and has been a design change we have already made in buildings since Marcy Hers and continuing on into perpetuity. So thank you so much, Trustee Westlake, for bringing this up. This was worth talking about. I appreciate it, and so, and now our community has more understanding about the nature of these costs as well. So I would entertain a motion on Item 2.12.
Move to approve.
I second. Oh, sorry.
All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley and a second by Trustee Westlake to approve consent agenda item 2.12. Seeing no lights on for further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. Now that closes Item 2.12 and Section 2 in its entirety, and we move on now to Section 3. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. Starting with Item 3.01, this is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to select individual members of the Board of Trustees to work with staff on selecting nominees for the Annual Nevada Association of School Boards Awards. This is an item for possible action. And before we get going with this, Dr. Nicolette and I are gonna do a little bit of explaining for this item, and also how we're gonna run it, because this is a new process for us. But first, I'd like to invite Trustee Nicolette to share a bit about what NASB is and what this opportunity is.
Thank you, President Smith. NASB, Nevada Association of School Boards, which is comprised of the 17 public school districts and their trustees, 104 of us, 104 strong, and we come together regularly. And to keep it very simple, there's an NRS that requires that school board trustees have a certain amount of training, and specifically the first and the third year of their service, and certain topics, for example, finance, open meeting law. And NASB is one of the only state organizations that provides those trainings at a very reasonable cost for the 17 school districts and the 104 trustees. And so the NASB Awards, Nevada Association of School Boards, is a way to recognize, and you know, I have to apologize, I'm not sure how long it's been around, but it's been at least 30 years that the NASB Awards have existed. Yes, quite a long time, and they changed from year to year. Certain, you know, topics come up, rise to the top, and become more important than the other, and so some are dropped and some are added. But having said that, in the past, Washoe County School District, and every school district does it differently. Every school district is different, as they should do it differently. Washoe County School District has no right or wrong, good or bad, no judgment here, has done it the way that we have done it, and basically, we receive the award titles, and then Communications, for example, works very vigorously, putting a lot of hours, and I mean a lot of hours, to try and identify, for example, let me just give you a few of the topics. There's the School Administrator of the Year. There's the School District Employee making a difference of that year. There is a Director of the Year. There is a District Level Administrator of the Year impacting student achievement, and it goes on and on. There are several, several more. And I have thought for quite some time, because I've watched my colleagues from around Nevada and how they do this process differently, and I really liked how my colleagues from around the state would discuss how they wanted to approach, in open meeting law, how they wanted to approach nominating people throughout the district. And I really liked that. And, and I also really liked that it takes some of the burden off, at least I'm hoping it will here, on communications. Because that was a, that's a lot of work. When you look at a school district this size, six thousand five hundred square miles, all the way up to Gerlach, down to Pleasant Valley, up to Incline and North Valleys, it's a lot of work. And I thought that, as trustees, it would be nice for us to spend a little more time and effort on this endeavor. Plus, I think our voice is very important, because we are Washoe County School District, NASB. And, and I think that we would all appreciate, like, having a little more voice and, and providing some more help to our district employees in this endeavor. So, that's about it. Just a little history as to why this is on the agenda.
Thank you. And so the way that this was done, because each district gets to decide for themselves how you go about who you're going to nominate, and then getting those submissions. And this was something for as long as anyone can remember, that was strictly under the purview of the president. Although that doesn't mean I did the choosing for everyone. Staff made a lot of recommendations. And so what we're doing now is only the trustees who want to be involved will have an opportunity to either volunteer for or to take some of these categories. And in some of these categories, there's more than one, which means two trustees could take and each do a nomination. So to be really clear about what we're doing, this is a volunteer opportunity. No trustee who does not want to do this or any of the individual awards, you don't have to. It'll only be based on the trustees who want to take one of the categories or would like to do this process. So this is not a requirement that everyone in the board take one or two or three. We'll go through item by item. I'll discuss how many nominations we can submit, and then the trustees who are interested in taking those categories can take it. If there are more trustees who would like to take that category than we have slots for, then we will draw for that, just so that it's random and fair. But again, this is not something that anyone has to do. This is the only time we're going to be doing this process. So the trustees who are assigned one of these categories will work with Communications. They will select the nominee for that slot. Communications will help develop and complete the paperwork, and it will be submitted. We're not mentioning or coming back to this body with who we've chosen. That's a completely different thing. You will be responsible for the submission that you volunteer for or that you are chosen for. But again, we do not come back to this board and then share ultimately who we chose. We could, if somebody wins, as we typically do, but this is the one and only time. And this is a more equitable way of not requiring everyone to be involved, but rather offering the opportunity. These are nominations submitted on behalf of our board, and this is a better way to make sure our board has the opportunity to be involved. So on that note, I'm gonna go over a few things. There is an attachment here, and you can actually see the submissions. It gives you an idea of what each of the awards are. But we have several categories, starting with the School Administrator of the Year. We're not gonna say who wants what. We're just gonna go through them. There are actually two nomination slots for that. Then there's also School District Employee Making a Difference. There are two nomination slots for that. There is District Level Administrator of the Year. There are two nomination slots for that. And then the following are one single nomination slot. We have the NASB Director of the Year. So that is a category. That means one, any person in the entire state of Nevada that is serving on NASB. For example, we have three on our board. We have our Board of Director, which is Trustee Westlake. We have our Executive Committee Member, which is Dr. Nicolette, and we also have our, your title is the alternate. Yes, Vice President Mayberry is our, is our alternate. So this is a category that would be open to anyone in the state. And just as a reminder, we don't have to be nominating people from our own board. So this is an area that might be particularly good for one of our NASB representatives, because we can nominate anyone across the state that we want to. And then we also have Veteran Board Member, which again is a, is a school board trustee member that is not in their first term. We have New Board Member, which is a trustee in their first term. And then we have Individual Trustee, which is a trustee in their third term. So you have to be out of two terms. And then we have our Friend of K-12 Education, Innovative Educator, Media Partner, Governance Team, Board Support Person, and then Superintendent of the Year. And so we'll go through these category by category and see who would like to take it or would like to submit themselves for it, and then JJ will help draw them. But we're gonna go category by category, and then what we're gonna do for the motion at the end is just one blanket motion that says to assign the nominations as they've been determined. Okay?
I actually have a question for legal, and I probably should have done this ahead of time, but I forgot. So I volunteered and then was appointed onto the committee nomination, selection committee. So I don't know what part of this I can legally do and what I shouldn't be doing.
The selection committees for NASB?
For NASB. I'm on the selection committee for, for NASB, for what we're doing right now.
I would, I would say that under, well, it doesn't benefit yourself. You're still.
But maybe the question is, if she's on the committee to choose the winners, she probably can't take any of the nominations, right? I don't know.
Yeah.
But these are NASB's rules.
I know. I mean, okay, so look, under 281A, which is the Code of Ethics for elected officials, it's probably not a violation of 281A. However, I think it would be really unprofessional for you to nominate somebody and work with our staff to nominate somebody and then get on the nomination committee for NASB and vote for that person. So you probably should recuse yourself.
Okay.
It's not a recusal under 281A, but that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could Trustee Westlake still vote on the motion to assign the categories to her colleagues?
Yeah, I think she can definitely vote on the motion. Again, doesn't, there's no benefit of cheating to her, so I think that's fine.
Okay, very good. All right, so the first category, and again, if anybody wants to follow along, it's the attachment that shows the nomination forms. We have two nominations available for School Administrator of the Year. So is there anyone who's interested in taking one or both of those categories?
I'll take one.
I just wanna ask a clarifying question, sorry. So the, the nominations, we're, we're working on the write-up, but district leadership or the, the communications is doing the write-up?
They'll help you with it. It's however it works for you. I will tell you, for example, I chose the nomination for Trustee Westlake when she won New School Board Trustee of the Year. In that case, I actually did her write-up, and comms helped me with it. But in other cases, like when Superintendent Stacy from Gerlach, when, when Principal Black won, in that case, staff came forward with that recommendation. They wrote it. I edited it. So however you work that out with communications, is they'll support you in the way that seems right for you.
Okay, sorry. Second part of that question is then communications and, and leadership, not leadership, just communications, would have some ideas of people who could be nominated, or we're supposed to seek these people out?
So that would be up to you.
Okay.
So, for example, I'll use the same one. For New School Board Trustee of the Year, I knew that I wanted to bring Trustee Westlake forward for that. In other categories, comms would say, here are some ideas, how you choose
Okay.
to work with them. You may have someone in mind, but ultimately, it'll be your choice on behalf of our board, and they will support you, bring ideas to you however you see fit.
Okay. I, I would love to do the other Administrator of the Year, unless somebody else is.
Nope, I see two people, and I don't see anybody else's lights on. All right, I, I only see that. All right, we'll move on to School District Employee of the Year. And again, if you wanna actually read what this is, this is to recognize the invaluable service provided to Nevada's children by employees who work behind the scenes to impact student learning and achievement. So there's two nominations for that.
I'd be happy to make two nominations, working alongside whomever.
And so remember, you would do yours, and as long as they're not the same person, but would anybody like the second one for that? I don't think he can put his video on, but I, Trustee Phoenix, you can hear us, right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So we have two slots for that, for anyone who's interested. Do you wanna take the second one? I'm more than happy to take this one too, because I, I'm interested in this one. Okay. So we have Diane and Beth for School District Employee of the Year. And then the next one is, this is an interesting one. This is the District Level Administrator of the Year. So this is different, okay? This is the invaluable service provided to Nevada's children by professional school district administrators who work at the district office and who impact learning and achievement. So this is a district level administrator. And we have two nomination slots for that.
I'll take one.
Okay, we've got one for Alex.
I can take one of these too, unless, I, I don't want, I don't wanna take over Trustee Phoenix if he wants an opportunity for any of these.
Well, and it's okay. So if we, if we have, I mean, we have two for these. We're going into the sections with one.
Okay.
If more than one trustee is interested, JJ will simply pull from her magic cup.
Okay.
All right, so we have Alex and Christine for District Level Administrator. And then now we have NASB Director of the Year. So we only have one nominating slot for this. And we can choose among our own representatives, or one of our existing NASB representatives can choose a colleague that serves in any of the capacities for NASB.
Diane Nicolette, I'd be happy to choose another colleague.
All right, Dr. Nicolette has volunteered for the NASB Director. And then now we have our Veteran School Board Member of the Year. So again, this is for any board member who has served more than one term. And so this could be for trustees that are in their second or their third term. And again, we can choose among all the colleagues that exist in the state, or we can choose among ourselves. And so I am more, if, if no one wants to take it, I am more than happy to take this one. All right, so I will take Veteran Board Member. I know you volunteer, but you get to be a chooser. Think about what a great job that is. Okay, New School Board Member of the Year. I would love, I'm gonna look at you, or maybe even Adam. This is any school board trustee in their first term. So for our colleagues that have a good view of strong performing new trustees in their role, this is an opportunity for us to recognize them wherever they are in the state. And so who would like to take this one? All right, Diane's looking at me, so I will go ahead, and I will take the New School Board Trustee of the Year. And the next award is the Individual School Board Member of the Year. So this one is unique. This is someone who has served more than two terms of service. So this has to be a trustee in their third term. I'm gonna, yes, I'm gonna ask you for that, because you have a lot of knowledge for trustees that are in their third term. So let the record show that Diane Nicolette has volunteered for that. And then we have our friend. This is a really exciting award, okay, this next one. And I, I'm coming up on one that I'm hoping to get as well, too. This is a Friend of K-12 Public Education. This is someone who's advocating on behalf of K-12 Public Education across the state, particularly during the sessions of the Nevada Legislature, or working in other ways to improve K-12 Public Education in Nevada. This is a very exciting award. So who, who is interested in taking this?
Yeah, I can, I can take this one.
Okay. All right, we're gonna give this one to Adam Mayberry. Vice President Mayberry is gonna take our Friend of K-12. And this one's also very exciting. This is the NASB Innovative Educator of the Year. So this is one nomination, and it's an individual who demonstrates their leadership by promoting and implementing innovative programs designed to improve student achievement. This is who we're nominating for Teacher of the Year. And again, it's okay if more than one trustee exhibit interest. That's where the magic cup comes in. Do not be shy. If you wanna get in on this one, let, let us know.
I would, I would.
I'd like to do that. This is JJ.
Would, would, would we be open to working on it together? No, it has to be individual?
No, we cannot do, not small groups. We can't have a subcommittee.
I, I will, I will yield to JJ and let him have it.
That is very thoughtful. All right. All right, Trustee Phoenix. Thank you so much, Trustee Hall. So Trustee Phoenix will be taking the Innovative Educator of the Year. And the next one is the Media Award for Outstanding Education Reporting. And so this is for media representatives in television, radio, or online journalism, when consistently outstanding reporting occurs in these areas.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this.
All right. So we have, Vice President Mayberry is interested in taking the Media Award category. And that brings us to the NASB School Board Governance Team of the Year. And so this is an award that's given to school boards working with their superintendents and collaborating with district leaders to improve student achievement across all grade levels. This is one I'm, I'm interested in taking. I'm very happy with all the categories I have. This was one that I was hoping to take. Okay? That brings us now to the Board Support. So this is the Board Secretary or Administrative Assistant or Other Board Support Staff Person of the Year, and it's just like it sounds. These are the people working behind the scenes with local school board members. And if I can say right now, our very own JJ Batshelder is a winner of this, in this category. Yes, she has. She's won this. So who might be interested in taking this?
I would love to take this one. I, I'll fight Adam over it. No, I'm kidding.
Is anyone else interested, or going once, going twice? All right, Trustee Hall is taking the Support Person of the Year. And then that brings us to the final category, also one nomination for NASB Superintendent of the Year. And it's just the way it sounds. So it would be really good if we have somebody who has an awareness across all the superintendents in the state. I, I have, I have a full dance card with a lot of these. Would, would you like this one? Someone's gonna take it.
I would be proud to take it. I, I'm only, the only thing I'm reticent about is, I will say, President Smith, you are, you have a firsthand working knowledge with the superintendent. So I'm going to ask our legal counsel what would be the parameters for the person who undertakes this nomination for soliciting thoughts from others?
Well, soliciting thoughts from others, meaning other staff members or from other trustees?
Yes and yes.
I think soliciting thoughts from staff members are okay. I think soliciting thoughts from other trustees could create inadvertent public body. And so I would caution against that.
Okay, thank you. That's why I asked. Sure, I would be happy to undertake this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless anybody else would like to, because I know, like me, Dr. Nicolette has a, has a full dance card with these two. Is everyone good with that? All right. All right, I took a, a list of all of that. You want me to read them off, or I think we're good? All right. No, we did not have to use the magic cup. And so now we do need to take public comment on this. So we're not gonna move. The public now sees how we would like to allocate these ourselves. And now, JJ, do we have any public comment from the community on this?
I have no cards.
All right, very good. So before we go ahead and call for a vote on this, I just wanna say thank you so much. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this item from Dr. Nicolette, and then also our Chief Communications, not Engagement anymore, yes, Engagement. Yeah, July 1, Michelle Anderson, and then also our own Chief Legal Counsel, Neo Rimbardo, for being a part of how we do this process better. And I am already feeling really good about this. So thank you so much. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the assignment of the nominees as described.
If it's okay, I'll do the motion since I can't say anything else.
I'll second.
Oh, did I do the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't do that. I was rambling. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the individual trustees selected to work with staff on selecting the nominees for the 2025 Nevada Association of School Boards Annual Awards as discussed.
Second, Madam Chair.
Very good. And now our Chief Legal Counsel will have a comment for the record.
Just, just a reminder on this. Just, just a reminder on this. So there is an opening law opinion from the past, actually out of the Washoe County School District. It's several years ago, 15 years ago, probably 20 even, that you can inadvertently create a subcommittee, and that can be of two peoples. So you're not to work together on this. And so I've heard people say, oh, if I'm nominating, there's two nominees for some stuff, you should not be talking to the other trustee about who they're nominating. If you end up with the same result, you end up with the same result. That is, that is what it is. Okay? You cannot, we do not want to be talking to each other about this stuff. Now, most likely, you're not gonna end up with the same because staff does not create a subcommittee. But just be very, very careful. We don't want to create the inadvertent subcommittee. So that's my admonishment. And this way, if anybody's watching, they know you were all to work in your own singular capacity. Okay? Well, I know people are watching, and that's why we're doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm really pleased with the way this turned out, and I'm very excited for this new practice. All right. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02. This is the Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Revisions to Board Policy 7086, School Closure, and Initiation of the 13-Day Public Review and Comment Period. This is an item for possible action. And we have presenting this our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Cersei, and our Chief Legal Counsel, Neil Rimbardo.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Adam Cersei, for the record. The last time we were together, we discussed an item proposing additions or revisions to this board policy, specifically looking forward. This current board policy speaks to the process and intentions around the difficult decisions to potentially close a school, but doesn't really suggest guidance on what to do with that school once that decision's been made. So as you may recall, there were some recommended guardrails or guiding principles that were a part of the staff report that we discussed, as well as some feedback back and forth with the Board of Trustees. So over the ensuing fortnight, Chief General Counsel and I incorporated these, as well as your feedback, to the best of our ability in this red line. And we're here to potentially talk about these red lines and consider initiating that next step.
All right. I thought that this looked really good. So we would have discussion. We'll be taking public comment, and then we'll come back. I did have a recommendation that I wanted to make. And it's also something I had brought up when we discussed this. And that is a line committing to communication and engagement with the community members. So not necessarily spelling that out. I thought it would possibly fall under Section 5, where we have either after or before, where we have the definition of the 501(c)(3). But just to kind of put it out there, I think it's important to have a line in the policy that commits to our engagement about the communication with the immediate families. So I wrote a line, which is, "When considering these options, the Board and District will engage the immediate families and neighborhoods affected, and the community at large to solicit their feedback, ideas, and needs." And I can, JJ, I can drop that in the chat. My, my point is, is that in this policy, I would like to see it written somewhere that we have committed to engaging the communities as we decide the options that we'll pursue. But I'd like to get your thoughts on that. And JJ, I can drop this in the chat if that would help as well, or I can read it again. And, and we also don't have to. That's why I'm very much interested in your feedback. Yeah. So it would be underneath where the options are in Section 5. "When considering these options, the Board and District will engage the immediate families and neighborhoods affected, and the community at large to solicit their feedback, ideas, and needs." Just as a general placeholder that says, "We're not just gonna decide ourselves, but we're committed to engaging with the communities."
So it would go underneath the, is that a four? Is that what that is?
Yeah, I did. It would be just like the 503(c) is a clarification. It would be right underneath that, either before it, or before it or after. And then I can drop it in the chat too. And again, this is just an idea team. We don't necessarily have to. But I, I'd like to see a reference to engaging the community in these.
Above, right?
Above.
Can you slide it up, JJ, please?
So I did read Section 4, and then I, to me, that read around the closure of the school, you know? And we would consider the pertinent facts about the closure of the school, not so much how the district will engage the communities on the options. But, you know, we, we definitely don't have to, because I look at them as two different things. We've got the process around why we would close a school or change its use. And then we have the new framework that we would make a decision around what that building could be. And so it was in that section that I wanted to see it memorialized, that we would engage the communities. So.
Let me, let me suggest for purposes of drafting, because what you have in 5 is you have criteria that you're going to follow. So it, it's, it doesn't, it, it doesn't fit to put the, what you're saying there. So I would suggest if you, but I understand what you're saying. So why not change paragraph 4 to read, "The Board recognizes that the permanent closure of a school and/or the change of use of a school is a difficult proposition for the students, and therefore you're engaging the community that way."
I would be absolutely fine with that. That 100%, that absolutely meets what it is I'm trying to accomplish.
I, I like that a lot better. I, I was a little concerned that it would sort of put too tight of parameters in if we did it in 5. So I, I'm good with that.
So absolutely. Could we, could we weave that in now into the draft? If we were, because again, we're not gonna take a vote, because we have to do public comment. But that would be getting at what I was trying to accomplish, because Section 4 just talks about the closure. And I want to make sure that the selection of what that site could be was also included in the engagement. So that works perfectly.
Yeah, I think when you make the motion, you would just say, "I move to approve", I'm giving you hypothetical, obviously you do it the way you want, you're the trustees, something along the lines of, "Move to approve Board Policy 7086 as it relates to school closures with the addition as discussed and agreed to by the Board." Or you could, you could make the amendment its own motion. You could do it any number of ways. But yes, you definitely can do it now. There's no reason to send this back and, and come back. This is a very minor change. And I, I don't see any reason. That's exactly why you do two readings. So if somebody doesn't like it, they can make a comment in the interim.
Great. I like that suggestion to just add in with the addition as agreed to by the Board. Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item, JJ?
Pablo Navadurán.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurán.
Hello. Hello. I live on New World Area. And, and that draft looked perfect, except, you know, needing a little add-on on number 4, or the change of school, you know, for example. For example, Pine is a middle school for now, and five years could be elementary school. So also, we need to have a, create a naming community. Not such, for the new elementary school at Pine Campus, not such this, this facility building, but also the new Loder Campus, a new Mathu Campus. Any future FYP building that could consolidate closer to that school. We need to have a community to get a new name on it. So. And then also, I like the number 5 option, the change of use. You know, I will support moving new admin building, build new admin building on Smith Street Campus. So it's more centralized, you know? And in Central Winner, we don't have a lot of land. So, Smith Street is, of course, is this is the biggest land that we could have. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I will, I mean, we can talk more about this, but just to make sure everyone understands the addition, if this motion were to be approved, would be what Chief Legal Counsel Rimbardo mentioned in the addition of those words in Section 4, rather than a whole new section.
I think maybe could we just review it? For everybody?
Do you remember what you said? Yeah.
So paragraph 4 would add the following. So I'll, the Board recognize, this is not what's added, I'll say it. "The Board recognizes that the permanent closure of a school district", this would be the new part, "and/or a change of use", oh, excuse me, sorry. "The Board recognizes that the permanent closure and/or the change of use of a school is a difficult proposition for students." So it would be like that.
So a motion could look like, with that previous advice, it would be, "I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revisions of Board Policy 7086, School Closure, with the addition as agreed to by the Board, and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period."
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Nicolet. We have a second by clerk Woodley.
Oh, no, I was ready to vote.
Okay. I see lots of lights on, but I don't think anyone has a comment on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. And that's item 3.02. And we will move on now to item 3.03. This is the Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Approve the Washoe County School District Fiscal Year 2026 to 2030 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan as Recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. This is an item for possible action. And we have our presenters, our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman, and our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers. Mr. Mathers, it's been so long since we've seen you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having us, President Smith, trustees. So today, bringing forward the FY26 Capital Improvement Plan, or as we like to call it, the CIP. We have our acronym, acronyms as well. So. So what is a capital improvement plan? It is a five-year financial plan that helps us put the dollars to our projects and expenditures, right? And show that in a way that you can digest it. It is in the Attachment C, so it's lined out in there. It's a spreadsheet of five years. It's got all of those projects, all of the expenditures and revenues listed out there. With the help of Mr. Mathers and his team, we were able to put that together. It is required to be put into our budget, so we have to get this approval from capital funding and then the Board of Trustees in order to do that. It does identify our funding sources, which you guys are, should be pretty familiar with, our WC1 rollover property tax, GST, or Government Service Tax, and our Indian Colony Money. This is not an authorization for each individual project. All of these will have to come back through capital funding and the Board for, for funding of either design or construction. So you're approving the conceptual plan of what we plan to spend our money on in the future. It is updated annually, right? Our needs change annually. So it's really prudent to actually look at this and digest it, and digest our needs, and then put it into an actual model so you can, you, we can see it, and you guys can see it. So we aligned our five-year CIP a lot with our, our Facility Modernization Plan that was approved in December of 2023. So a lot of those major projects are in there. You'll see them. We'll get, I'll get to a little bit of what's changed in there in the future. The next one that's in that CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, is our Capital Renewal Plan, which we call our CRP. So that's, we have ours too. We're just not as cool as the education side with them. But we, this is supported, our capital renewal is supported by our Facility Condition Index System, which actually ranks all of our building systems and of all, all of our site amenities in an order of how they get replaced. And that could include grounds with playground equipment. It can include HVAC with a, a air conditioning. It can include roofs. So that you'll see come forward to actually, the actual plan in our June 2024 Board Meeting to approve that capital renewal plan. So you'll see that a little bit later. But it is embedded in this because it's part of our whole, our CIP. A lot of these are driven based off the facility modernization. They're driven by student data, critical repair needs, and as our Facility Modernization Plan talked about, equity. And we've adjusted it based off of financial modeling and revenue performance. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mathers to talk about the financial resources for this.
Great. Thank you, Tammy. So as, as you mentioned, what this plan does is matches kind of the desired pacing of capital projects with the available revenues that we have. And so to talk about those revenue sources, which again dictate kind of how fast or slow we can go, we have used for many years and continue to use a mix of debt financing and pay-as-you-go cash funding projects. We always prefer to cash fund a project so that we don't have to pay interest on that debt. And so when we can do that, we do that. But for major, major projects, like a new middle school or a new high school, we can't wait to build up cash reserves to build that, or else we'd be sitting here for 15, 20 years. So in those cases, we will issue long-term debt, either 20, 20 to 30-year term debt that is supported by the revenue sources you see here. And really, there are only two major sources that we have, but they are significant, and they provide a great deal of funding that we can use. The first, of course, is the WC1 sales tax, the 0.54% sales tax on goods and services that voters in Washoe County approved in November of 2016. And then the second one is our slice of property taxes. You'll see on your annual property tax bill, school district debt line, that's 38.85 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And that generates a significant amount of annual revenues. So we leverage those revenues to issue rollover bonds or WC1 bonds, which I come to you frequently on. And, and so again, those are kind of the streams of funding we have to model against projected expenditures. And this simply gives you a summary of those sources year by year. Again, we kind of, you know, plan out bond issuances around major new facilities. You see, not every year are we issuing debt. And, and I must say, we've reached kind of an inflection point a bit. As you all know, talking about the operating budget, we've seen sales tax flatten. And so this year's CIP shows that flattening of sources as compared to prior year CIPs where we projected kind of a more normal 5% annual growth. We have seen WC1 sales taxes flat for three straight fiscal years. We've been very conservative in how we've modeled that in this plan. We've assumed no growth for several years, and then a very slow rebounding of that revenue growth. On the other hand, property taxes are growing strong. And we, with abatement at where it's at, we don't see any reason to not assume at least continued growth at 3% a year. So again, that informs how much we can do in terms of capital projects in any one year. It is multiple rounds of iterations with the capital project staff to model that. So again, we've talked about kind of the economic woes that we face a bit. Just to again reassure you that we are a strong credit and have are fiscally conservative and sound, and will always have money to pay debt service. We again have ample reserves, close to 11 months of debt service that we've socked away. So, and we can use that in case there is a drop in revenues. So if we go into a severe recession, we have significant amount of cash to be able to utilize for the debt service fund. We also have strong coverage. We try to leave 20 to 25% buffer between the maximum debt service we have for WC1 bonds and that annual projected revenue amount. So we could follow 20, 25% in sales tax and absolutely cover our debt. That extra 20 to 25% buffer, then we're using to cash fund projects. So we're in good shape financially. And again, we went through multiple rounds of modeling this to come up with this plan.
So this next slide is the proposed expenditures. This is mostly just a roll-up of what you see in that big, long attachment. Our major construction projects, our capital renewal plan, GST funds, debt services, capital outlay, and fleet, they're all an other, and they're all listed underneath those categories within those, the Attachment C. Just gives you a breakdown. Key shifts, we talked about, with Mr. Mathers talking about how our revenues have, are flat, cost of construction is increasing, labor is increasing, so we've had to look at the schedule and realign some of those. And that CIP reflects that, the funding availability and the projects that we can afford within the years that we can afford them in, based off of that. So there are some that are, we've rephased, or we've come, come out with a million dollars in year one to do some conceptual studies so we can get started, but we can't afford that project in year one. So that's why they've moved out for some of them. At Maxwell Elementary specifically, you can see that line item change from last year. We believe that we need to do more of a major modernization there, based off of the dollars and what we're seeing for Maxwell. And that is further out, so it's not in year one, but it's, it gives us an indication, right? It's a planning, we're looking forward to it. And really, our first year is what we're really trying to make sure is super accurate. After that, we'll come back next year and do the same thing again with our revenue and our discussion about what our needs are. And so that's, starting that reflection of what our needs may be at that school is, that's what that's indicating. So timeline and shifts to accelerated delivery of student-centered improvements. You'll see there is an accelerated FMP Opportunities line item of 3.5 million dollars on there. It's not super focused yet, we just are procuring the idea of doing that within this year. And what it may be, we'll have to come back to you to show you what that plan is. So it keeps that opportunity open. If we don't plan for it, we have a hard time actually coming and doing that work. So the other one that I want to promise with this, and, and we've talked about it with Pine Elementary, this elementary school on Pine Campus, is that design process inclusive of stakeholders and blend school cultures. Some of that money, when we talk about that million dollars in that first year to start planning, helps us do that work. So we're committed to doing that, we've heard from the Board that that's something that's very important. So that's part of what is in those items. So other major, major capital investments that you'll see on there are Admin Central Service Office that's planned in there, transportation upgrades, bus attendance systems, purchases of fleet, and they're lined out in that Attachment C, safety investments, ERP modernization, and the device IT refresh. So takeaways from this are the facility modernization has driven this, this plan. It's, it's implemented in there, it's just in a little bit different years than it was initially. We've made some adjustments, smart adjustments based off of our revenue and what the construction is going to cost us and what we're looking forward to. But we balance that, right, with our investments and our community engagement. We're going to go out there and do that work, and we're, we're committed to that, and we have a strong financial foundation to do that work with. So our next steps are continued community engagement. We're going to be coming back to capital funding, which is community engagement, as well as the, the communities that we'll be working in and to the Board of Trustees for those, those approvals. And then we'll start working on implementation and specific project updates to the Board. And so the staff is recommending or asking for the, the approval of the FY26 Capital Improvement Plan as recommended by Capital Funding Protection Committee.
So I just have one question, and that is around the hot topic of playgrounds. So can you take a moment and explain if the projects that are addressed through WC1 funding, does that include a review of their playgrounds, a modernization? What is included with that? And then I know we're having another discussion later in the month, too.
So if, working with Mr. Mathers and his, his department, if they are funded with WC1, they can absolutely purchase, we can absolutely purchase playground equipment in those, for those projects. It can be part of the modernization projects, which could be funded that way. It could also be part of our capital renewal plan that can be funded that way. So they are absolutely a WC1-approved expenditure.
I appreciate that, because, you know, we're adults, and so we look at playgrounds like play, but play is learning for our children, and recess time and proper engagement is how we get better focus. I am a mom, I'm not a classroom teacher, but I know that playgrounds for our younger learners are incredibly important, and we do have access to that WC1 funding, so I would encourage us to do that and to, we're going to have a larger conversation around it later in the month, but playgrounds are not just for play, they are for learning for our youngest learners as well.
Thank you, President Smith. Piggybacking on that, I had also brought up if we could look at the fields and the sustainability of our fields at the elementary schools. Some of them look fantastic. I don't know, they must have hit, hit water or something, and others, I mean, these little kiddos, Sun Valley Elementary, they might as well be playing on dirt, and they have their championship soccer game there. So if, if that could be kept in mind, too. I know I'm only one board member, but I just thought to keep it alive and everybody's thinking as we're moving forward, to make it the same across the board, the same experience for these kids when they're out there playing their, their championships and their games. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello. So, so, so I will, I will approve the staff application of fire, capital plan improvements, that improve of a new Echo Lord Elementary School at Echo Lord Campus. You know, you got, have a community engagement with Lord and Corbett Elementary School as well, if they're wanting to, um, causeway with Corbett, cause down Washoe County Elementary School to build new school at Echo Lord, and same thing at New Elementary School, Pine Campus with Dawson Community, so. And also same thing as K. Smith with the Matthew Elementary School Modernization Plan, so we got to make sure, we got to make sure that enrollment need to be updated throughout, because back in 2022, the enrollment over there, you know, might be outdated, but got to update the enrollment, because the enrollment might change. So we had to do smart adjustments, also an inflation going up based off tariff and anything else, so have the smart planning for Tammy Zimmerman, I'm silly, and Matt Mather for this decision, so not everything, get a new school, you know. I know urban area needs some new school, not such a central area, but in Sparks area as well, so. And make sure, make sure to build a right side of the school, and then track the enrollment number, and make sure it builds for the kid, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran. All right, I'll bring it back here, if the Board is interested in either a discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion.
Oh, please.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Washoe County School District's Fiscal Year 2026 to 2030 five-year capital improvement plan as recommended by the Capital Protection, Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Second.
By the tone of voice, I'm going to give the win to Vice President Mayberry on that one. So we have a motion by trustee Hall, we have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on for further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries, seven to zero, thank you. That closes item 3.03, and we go now to our final item in this section. Item 3.04, the presentation and discussion to update the Board of Trustees on the outcomes of the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session based on the priorities of the approved 2025 Washoe County School District Legislative Platform, including creating space for students to thrive, empowering our personnel, supporting our local community, and advocating for smart strategic funding, as well as updates to the Washoe County School District's Legislation Assembly Bill 49. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we have with us from Pinion Public Affairs, Tess Opferman and Dylan Shaver. Welcome, and good to see you alive and well, although we're not quite done, because we're in signing season right now, but it's really a pleasure to have you here.
It's our pleasure to be here, and thank you for the opportunity, Dylan Shaver, on behalf of Pinion Public Affairs. Here just to give you a close of the legislature update, and as the President alluded, we're not done yet. The Governor received a, a bunch of bills as late as the 6th, it looks like. He would have until the 18th to sign those. And I don't know if anybody over there is listening, but that really messes up Pinion's client reporting. We really try and get a comprehensive overview of what passed and what failed, and they're really just holding things up for us. So I, in the meantime, you get to wait on that, and instead you just get the, the live version. So true to form, I like to give you just a, a heads up as to the direction we're going to take this. We'll just give you a, a 30,000-foot reminder of what our goals were going into '25. We'll highlight some key successes, we'll highlight some areas where things just didn't quite make the mark. We'll, we'll delve a little bit into the major education reform package of the past in Senate Bill 460. I will be very alarmist about the future of school funding in this state, and then we'll start planning for the future. I had to check and make sure Mathers was back there, it's like I said those words and he showed up. So when we left your platform in the fall, I, I tried to pitch it to you sort of as a, a comprehensive kind of story we're trying to tell about why we're at the '25 legislature, and you know, you are locally elected trustees, so our first charge there is to support our local community and to empower our personnel who we entrust with educating our kids and running this, this, this large organization, while we create space for those students to thrive, to thrive, and that, of course, requires advocating for, for smart and strategic funding from, from the legislature. In addition to that, that overarching platform, you requested your own legislation in the Excellence in Every Hire Act. This was a bill that, working with staff and the superintendent and the seven of you, we put together a proposal really to eliminate some barriers to the hiring process, whether it's licensed educators or support personnel or what have you. We identified several key areas to just make life a little easier for the hiring process, but mostly for the applicants who didn't want to wait around. The, the, the focus of the bill became essentially this concept of provisional licensure, where we could put personnel to work pending the Department of Education, sort of putting them through their process for about a year. That bill, I am pleased to report, passed unanimously from both houses of the legislature. It cleared the Senate on the very last day of the legislative session, and luckily, was transmitted to the Governor on the 6th, so he has until the 18th. We have notified his staff and worked closely with the Department of Education to get that bill into the final form that it was. I never want to make any promises before, in front of a client like this with a, the, the potential it could go any other way, but I will say we're hopeful. You may also recall that Assembly Bill 386, brought by Assembly Member Goulding at the district's request, was an attempt to resolve sort of the conflict between MAP and I Ready we are having in this district, they're having down Lyon County, parts of Clark as well, to essentially allow districts to choose the read-by-three assessment that worked best for those districts. I have mixed news here insofar as 386 made it through the Assembly pretty easily, when it did. The Senate had a tougher time of it, they amended the bill a couple of different ways, and working with a couple of key legislators, what we did with that is we let Assembly Bill 386 die and put our preferred version of the bill into Senate Bill 460, which is the sort of overarching education package, which contains a lot of the Governor's own information, or own priorities, as well as some of a, a few key Senate leaders. So unless the Governor is going to take the extraordinary step of vetoing his own measure, the, we're pretty confident about that. I want to talk about these two bills because for the political subdivisions of the state, success is not guaranteed at the legislature. Prefiled bills in particular are often sort of, they get a cursory hearing and then they are set to the side. And here I am, proud to say that, that, that the two sort of things we were asking the legislature for as a school district were passed. That took a lot of energy, and I, I don't, I don't want to say to you that it took a lot of Pinion energy, it, it certainly did, but the real energy happened in this building with, with your team here, and so with the expertise of Doug Owen and, and his team, you know, not just, I think you all know well enough, we're not experts at Pinion, right? But Doug and his team made us experts. Laura Davidson on 386 and the team around her made us experts so that we could go into these rooms and have these conversations and negotiate on the district's behalf whenever we needed that support. And it's not true to those specific individuals, I'm going to weave some of this throughout the entirety of the presentation, but I'm going to start here by saying, without their work, we would not be able to report this. We happen to have good bills, a lot of good bills died, and that their work are the things that, that really made the difference on this.
Can, can we go back to that slide? So it just, it's worth putting an exclamation point on this so that everyone understands that we brought forward two strong, important ideas to advance and improve education for the entire state of Nevada, and both of those are live as of right now. This is no small feat and an incredible success. So to the team at Pinion, to our superintendent, to our executive team members, our legislative representative, clerk Woodley, I just want to take a moment of full recognition, most bills don't see any advancement, and yet we have two live at this stage. So an absolute and remarkable, thank you and congratulations for this, truly, truly.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on that, ditto, kind of a bold question, and if, and I say it is tongue-in-cheek, this is going to jinx the Governor signing it, don't answer it, but AB 49, you know, why wouldn't the Governor sign it? It was passed both houses, I mean, there's nothing in there that's polarizing. Do you have any insight on that?
I don't think there's any reason he, he wouldn't. We worked with his agency to address their concerns, the Department of Education, it passed unanimously from both houses. I, I think that we have done the work that, that needs to be done to earn that particular signature. I will say that the Governor's team and in, in working with some of his direct staff on this, they're putting a tremendous amount of energy into vetting every section, every section of every bill that shows up in front of them, and that just takes a little bit of time, right? And they've indicated, you know, we, on a bill where we have until the 18th, don't be surprised if, if it lingers out there for a while, because they're going to double-check everything and make sure that, that they're taking their responsibility as, as the arbiter of these signatures seriously. So I, I think that, I'm going to knock on wood here, you know, we've done our work here, and of course, if there's anybody listening, which I would be surprised, but if there are any questions, I think we've made it pretty clear that we're open to them to have those answered, to get them what they need. I think Tess was going to...
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in specifically on AB 386, just to give some appreciation to Assembly Member Goulding, who happily took on that bill, I think, starting session. She didn't necessarily know the impact, but towards the end of session, session, we had a meeting, and she sat down and, and we were meeting with NDE, and she said, "I, I just really am excited about this piece of legislation, because this means that my neighbors, elementary school students, will be tested less." So I think it's worth just pointing out her hard work on this bill. I know that her specific bill is not the one that moved, but she, she did a lot for the school district, and wanted to appreciate her.
Thank you, Tess. Likewise, on behalf of school, school district, we're very grateful. And again, just to, you know, make sure that we're, we're really getting at the root of this, is we're talking about reducing testing for our kindergarten through third-grade students, our primary students who are five to eight years old, and we're trying to reduce the amount of testing, and thanks to Pinion, Dr. Davidson, and the entire team for being able to do a great job incorporating that into 460, and helping us take a small step forward, because I think intuitively, we maybe recognize some of the limitations of too much testing and maybe not enough actual teaching, and so this is one step forward that we'll, we'll take as progress to really support our youngest learners. So thanks, Tess. So thanks, Tess.
As you know, your platform calls on us to be very watchful of unfunded mandates. There are always dozens of those. I wanted to highlight two large ones, and again, this is an area, these are areas where I've got people to acknowledge. We heard about AB 323 before the session even started. It came out of the interim committee on education, essentially would have required districts to jump through a series of hoops to make the decision to close a school, including putting the State Department of Education and potentially the Legislative Commission in the position of interfering with that already challenging decision. You best believe that Adam Searcy saw that language before I did and was on it. And from the moment that bill was introduced, we were talking to legislators about the effect. Listen, no school district across this state wants to have to make a decision like that. But even worse are the implications of not being able to and, you know, having to keep failing buildings open in communities that no longer are served by them. And so we got a very receptive legislature with that message. Senate Bill 396, by contrast, was actually, I believe at its core, a very good bill in that it tried to set out instructional ratios for special ed students. Unfortunately, the sponsor was surprised to learn that it would cost more than $100 million a biennium. And, you know, just the various provisions of the bill, while well-intentioned, were simply unaffordable. I do want to thank Senator Rogich. By the end of the session, she had given up on the costly parts of her bill and gotten the bill to a place where the district could live with the language in there. A lot of that was done with input from folks like Jen Van Tress, folks like Sarah Montalvo in the council's office, as well as our budget director, Jeff, whose last name I'm always embarrassed to say out loud, so I'm just going to say Budget Director Jeff. And, you know, we got that bill to a good place. It still did not proceed, but I wanted to make sure to thank Senator Rogich on the record. She's been a leader in this space for much of her own career before she was elected, and we were grateful to be able to work with her on that. And then, you know, bills, and this is where most of our work happened. Someone over Torres Fawcett brought a bill on open enrollment. I think we saw the governor's call for that in his state-of-the-state address. There were a handful of very aggressive bills that were introduced in this space. We worked with Chair Torres Fawcett for probably 100 of the 120 days of the legislative session to sort of get that to a place that very closely reflected your existing policy on the matter. Unfortunately, we'll have to make some updates. The law as passed does require that we prioritize access to the School of Choice program to students who are currently in one- and two-star schools under the Nevada State Performance Framework. That said, my understanding is that 97% of students who apply get their first choice, so I don't know that making that update will meaningfully change sort of the way the program's administered. But things in there, you know, originally, there was a lot of talk about districts providing transportation using an already sort of small bucket of transportation funds and having to work through all of that. All of that came out of the bill, and it really focused its efforts on just making sure each district had a policy in place. Now, the sort of interesting thing about that is that maybe four years ago, that would have been a very interesting bill. As of right now, Clark and Washoe already have programs in place. And then I'm sure a lot of us have been to some of our rural counties. I don't know that there's going to be folks trying to do that. Nevertheless, Chair Torres Fawcett made sure that our concerns were addressed. SB 177, here's where I'm just going to use this as an opportunity to talk less about the bill and more about the tremendous expertise that Paula Marko brings to the table. Because, you know, as introduced, this bill would have sort of changed some disciplinary standards from the changes that were made in '23 to correct the '19 changes. And, you know, we sort of went in with the plan of, hey, can we just let one set of rules work for a while here? The bill now was changed to just primarily provide a check over the McKinney-Bento laws in the process that we used to handle students in transition, which I think Washoe has a record that we can be proud of. And with Dr. Marko's leadership and other folks on the team, we were able to get that bill to a good place. I don't want you all to think that I just wanted to talk about six bills here. As I said at the beginning, you are going to get a comprehensive report once the detailed deadline passes, and really, I'm just giving you an overview today. There were a number of missed opportunities. We all went into session with, I think, high expectations for pre-kindergarten and early childhood funding. Both the governor and the majority leader made some pretty sizable proposals along those lines. Neither were realized. I think coming up to this session, I had mentioned in a previous briefing that education last session had sort of gotten its turn, and money that we would perceive to be freed up for education was likely to be diverted elsewhere. And while there were state budget cuts, right? The economic forum, you know, came in lower than anticipated. The funds were still, could have been there to do this, but ultimately, the legislature just saw other priorities as sort of percolating to the top. One of those opportunities they missed, in my opinion, was sending more money to the Commission on Innovation in Education, which would have gone towards revamping the school performance framework, the star rating process. I'm on the record several times now saying that what we're doing there is measuring affluence of the communities the schools serve and not the performance of the schools themselves. It's real disappointing that we got through with sort of what you would call an accountability plan that still pegs to that old framework. But I'm still encouraged by the conversations that were had, and I'll say a little bit about that in a moment. And then, of course, accountability became very political very quickly. I think it always is. But I think towards the end, when we saw the major education bills drop, the folks behind those measures had sort of set aside the idea that accountability can be a collaborative process and instead had to be sort of an adversarial or antagonistic interaction. And I can, I probably can't count on both hands the number of sort of deep conversations I had with superintendent on that very topic because it's not productive and doesn't move us forward as an educational community. But I do have to remind myself that when we're talking about accountability, there are billions of taxpayer dollars on the line. And so the folks who are elected to those roles are responding to a different set of stimuli, I think, than we would like them to. They want there to be sort of a harder form of accountability. They didn't really pass one, though, and that gets us, I think, if I have my slide order correctly, to the major education bills. We saw the governor's bill, AB 584, drop in the closing days of the legislative session with a pretty ambitious plan for allowing the state superintendent to take over entire school districts, if not individual schools, that were poorly performing, for allowing the municipal, the county, or the charter takeover of public schools and things like that. I don't know that I necessarily want to opine on any of that except to say currently, the State Department of Education can take over a school that is struggling, and they do not because it is hard. And I think that we saw everybody acknowledge that because most of the provisions in 584 were rolled into Senator Canizaro's bill, Senate Bill 460. And then 584 was left by the wayside. I think Governor Lombardo wants to do the right thing in education here. I think Senator Canizaro wants to do the right thing here. I think primarily what we learn at a legislative session is 15 people all want to do the right thing, and our voice in the room, I'm increasingly learning, is just to say, okay, but here's how this works on the ground. And in doing so, we were able to work very closely with the state superintendent, with both education chairs and with the Senate Majority Leader, to have many of our concerns with both bills addressed. In addition to your closing report, you're going to get an entire download on just Senate Bill 460 because it is voluminous. I want to highlight some of the key changes that were made in the bill just very quickly to give you a sense of where we started and where we ended. So, for example, in the original Senate Bill 460, there was language essentially holding a principal to the sole account for the success of their entire school and requiring, in one version of the bill, principals to come here to justify that performance. And immediately, we had an hour and a half-long session with staff just reading this bill and breaking through. And it came through, it's like, well, you know, regardless of what you think of this as HR policy, we're never going to be able to recruit a principal ever again. And, you know, luckily, sort of working through the process, that worked its way out. The bill also contained teacher-to-administrator ratios in schools, which ignored, first of all, that principals do not only manage teachers. They have a whole other staff for whom they're responsible. But also, and the superintendent reminded me of this on several occasions until I just begged them to take us out of the bill. But the, that, you know, certain schools might have certain programs that require their own administrator. Might have populations that are served better by having an administrator in a certain position, and getting locked into a particular ratio really ties our hands in being able to do that. And so luckily, there was an amended version of the bill that had it apply solely to Clark County. And then in the final version of the bill, I think the legislature realized that that was just not workable overall, so all of that language came out. A lot of the more punitive language of the bill, and this is the area, we all get a version of Joe Ernst, and I want the public to know the version that I get. Gets sometimes frustrated with the policymaking process, as do we all. But this is a place where I got to aggressively download my opinions on the topic of calling any school low-performing or underperforming with all of the work that we put in. To, like, at my kid's school, it's Falcon Pride. What was yours? Tess doesn't remember her school pride.
Mr. Ernst does remember, so.
That we would ever sort of tell the families that school serves, like, here's where we're failing, right? You know, those sorts of things seem to have a deleterious effect on the entirety of the educational community. And so we now, those are, I believe, focus schools now under the bill. And what happens, rather than starting with, we're going to take this school away from you, we're starting with, well, NDE is going to work with us to sort of, on a corrective plan, and I believe there's some resources that come along with that. So it's a tough bill. I would be lying if I said we got everything we wanted out of that process. That's certainly not the case. But I can say with a straight face that the legislature and the governor's team took about 80% of our recommendations. The firmer things in the bill do not take effect until after the next session of Nevada Legislature. So if there are changes that need to occur, certainly a lot of work will go into this over the interim.
And just really quick, as a bit of a fun fact, I don't know how many people know that Tess was Superintendent Ernst's student back in the day.
I was, and I figured out Mr. Ernst's mouth reading, but gopher pride, right?
That's right. And Tess was an amazing student and a joy to have in our classroom.
There you go. So in front of us, we have the fruit of your talent as an educator. I won't say much because, you know, obviously, we're grateful for everything, but to get 80% of what we were advocating for is remarkable. And I will just say that the accountability conversations are always particularly interesting to me because at the end of the day, we're a district that's 60% roughly underfunded just to national average. And so when I think about accountability, the first thing I think about is, do you wish what we could be doing for our kids if we were more properly funded? And that's really where the conversation around accountability begins for me personally. But just remarkable work, and thank you so much for making sure that so much of what we were advocating for was avoided or implemented, depending on whether we did or did not want it to happen. So thank you.
Well, and I repeat myself, it is a pleasure, and I agree, Tess is an amazing gopher. We were the Ronzoni Rattlers, but that was down in Vegas. We have to be very clear-eyed about the future of education funding in the state. And the finance person that I respect most in this state is behind me, and he can speak more credibly to any of this. But we have to acknowledge now that despite the Commission on School Funding sort of analysis and recommendations, it's going to be a very steep uphill climb to bring Nevada to the national average or even get close to it. That combined with Washoe County's across-the-board declining enrollment is going to sort of be a ball and chain around our ankle that I wish my firm could show up here with an easy answer for. But it's going to be challenging. The legislature, you know, made some changes to the calculation, the way we calculate special ed funding, that will work against us as well. Again, it becomes a count issue more than anything. We were working on having some language included in a trailer bill to follow all that, to at least help the county get to the bridge. But if you've read the media accounts of the way the legislative session ended, that never came to be. The at-risk funding, I believe that has to come out of the black box. That's good news. It will not come out right away, but I think that the sort of secretive way that's calculated is going to be undone. So we have a little bit of a positive there. But all of that sort of gets set aside when we look at the last two factors on this slide. The one big, beautiful bill going through Congress right now does contain Medicaid cuts. I've been here sounding the alarm about Medicaid cuts before. We don't take Medicaid money, but Medicaid takes general fund money. And depending on the nature of those cuts and what ultimately works its way through the United States Congress, that could splash onto public education in all 17 counties of the state. I believe it is $16 billion of federal money that comes into the state for Medicaid alone. That is larger than the entirety of the state general fund for that same period of time. And then the other issue at hand is declining tourism in southern Nevada. There is something about people who travel internationally that just feel a little uncomfortable going even to Las Vegas when the government has made its stance on international travelers pretty clear. And so we have seen about a 10% decline year over year in the strips take in southern Nevada. The economic forum kept those figures flat in their predictions. I hope they are right. But again, in this room, I have to say, you know, these are the things that we're going to be looking at for the next several months. When people throw around, I'm sure you've heard in social media or what have you, oh, are they going to do a special session for this? Are they going to do a special session for that? I don't think that there was any bill that failed that is worth it to the governor to call them back in. This would be a necessity if numbers sort of... This would be a necessity if numbers sort of continue in that downward trajectory. I don't want to stake my claim to that particular prediction, but I do want to just sort of highlight that. All of the numbers that make up the state education fund, there's probably going to be a little more softness in there. And I would be surprised if we came through that unscathed. I know, that was really uplifting. The only thing we can do now is plan. And I tell every opinion client, we spend the legislative interim and about 100 days of the legislature, giving them the tools they need to make the decisions in those last 20 days where we don't get to be in the room, we don't get to be on the committees, we don't get to cast a vote. And so that starts now. We really have to reframe the way lawmakers consider education policy in this state. An unintended side effect of what we would call the period of transition happening in the larger school district in this state has been, you know, their team has turned inward to address inward challenges, meaning that what really should be the preeminent leader in this space in the state, the largest school district we have, is just focused on other things. And with that vacuum, a handful of players have stepped into the space. And I think that it is critical, going into the '27 legislative session, that all 17 school districts are aligned on what exactly it is we are there to do and what resources we have at our disposal to do so. Being the sort of second-largest district kind of on par now with the state public charter school authority and their, and their, puts us in sort of a very vulnerable position because we know that most lawmakers aren't from around here, and we simply do not have the numbers that if they really wanted to do something, to block it. So we have to sort of think creatively, and we have to think about being an ally to all 63 of them. A change with the state superintendent will bring with it changes at the Department of Education. Hopefully, we can facilitate a positive and productive relationship there. I know that at various levels of staff, there's some very productive conversations, but also we're aware that there's some places where it's just not, and that doesn't help anybody. And so we really want to focus on, as they go through their process, is making sure Superintendent Ernst and the team have a seat at the table, and that we can start fresh with a new Department of Education when the opportunity comes. And then, again, just sort of, as we reframe, we have to think about the role that NAS and the school boards and the other parties, what can we all align on here? And can we develop sort of a consolidated agenda for education where we can all agree? Certainly, there's going to be areas where there's going to be disagreement even with our own bargaining units, but when we get to Carson City, I think the question really should become, what are we all here to do? And we can sort of stand down on some of the other things, and I think we'd all get a little bit farther that way. So I'm the last item on the agenda. So there's me, everybody's favorite otter, beaver?
Gopher.
Gopher. And the rest of the opinion team. Again, it's been an honor to represent you through this legislative session. You've got a lot of paperwork coming from the opinion side. Happy to answer any questions or get you to whatever the next thing in your day is.
All right, thank you, Madam President. All right, Mr. Shaver, thank you for the presentation and for your representation of us down south. I'm in Carson City is what I'm referring to, not Vegas. Although, from what I heard, you were representing Vegas as well. It was good to have you and Washoe County School District down at the legislature. From what I understood and I've heard through the grapevine, is that you were down there representing all of us. And which leads me to believe and agree with you in your last slide, that we do need to work together with all these other entities to have a solid voice and speak as a whole. The fact that you stated 80% of your recommendations were taken by the governor, we love that. And also, I think your quote says it all, where you stated, here's how it works on the ground. And thank goodness you guys were there to share that. Because so many times, individuals down in Carson, especially from down south or from different walks of life, they have no idea how it works on the ground. They just make laws, and then we'll fix it afterwards in the next session. So we really, really do appreciate your hard work. And I appreciate all the update and the constant communication that we had. That was deeply appreciated. Thank you. And Tess, I want you to know que nosotros te agradecemos muchísimo y te queremos aquí. Okay? She understands what I said. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. I think you guys, I mean, amazing work. I mean, absolutely amazing work. And so I just want to say thank you for, I mean, these were huge accomplishments. They really were. And I know I appreciate it, I know our whole district appreciates it, but I just, if we could go back to Slide 7, I just, I have to say this. I am so proud to be part of Washoe County School District because I'm looking at what they were wanting to do. And I forget, I think some of this was the governor and others. We're, we've already stepped into that space. We're already building our pre-K. Just today, we were talking about, you know, reducing numbers in classes and how we can best support our special ed students. We're way ahead of them. And I think that is hugely to the leadership teams and to Mr. Mathers, he's gone, but helping us realize how we can do those, even against the odds of the state not giving us the money to be able to do these things. We are already jumping into the ring and trying to figure it out on our own so that we can do the best job for our kids. And I'm just, I'm really proud of our district. I'm proud of the district teams that work so hard. And I'm proud of the board members for us having the vision to ask the questions, to get the information so we can be doing these things and be ahead of the game. So thank you, everyone.
Because I'm playing the role of hype girl today, I think it's worth pointing out just the amount of work the staff put in to give us information. We had a weekly meeting with the executive leadership team. The list of staff members that provided input on all of the bills is extensive. The speed with which staff responded to emails and questions was really, really helpful. So I just, I thought it worth pointing out that staff across the board here at the school district is what made a lot of this work possible because we were able to get input and know what bills did and take that to the legislature, so.
They're good ads.
Go ahead.
Oh, I realize, I don't think I said Jen Van Tress's name when I was going through. And I want to make very clear that after two years, I think I'm just starting to scrape the iceberg on special education and how it works and all of the energy that goes into that. And without her sort of constant availability in that topic, we would have been completely lost. I hate naming individual names because I know I'm leaving people out, but it was, to Tess's point, people were very accessible. We tried to keep it easy for them, but even when we couldn't, I think it went as smoothly as it could have.
I'm just going to play hype girl for a second here and say, I was out at the legislature a lot and saw both of you many times passing in the hallway and in hearing committee meetings. But what I wanted to say is, you are highly respected, and I know that that has a lot to do with the fact that you do spend the time to understand what you're really advocating for. And that is, that is so evident with how respected you are by the legislators and their staff. Like, it's not even a question that they call you guys first, and we are so grateful that we have you on our team. So I just, I'll play hype girl for a second and say that I know firsthand how respected you guys are. So thank you for fighting for our kids. Really appreciate it.
And we're going to give the last word to Superintendent Ernst.
Very sincere thanks, and trustees appreciate all the recognition for opinion and the executive leadership team and the staff. As Dylan mentioned, there's countless staff that have participated and provided feedback, very informed feedback at a very technical level. And it's been very impressive to see the opinion team process that technical information and then put it into thoughts and actions. And so we're grateful for your leadership there and the work that you have done in educational space. So thank you.
This is a lot of very kind words, and we appreciate all of them. I'm terrible at accepting compliments, so I think on behalf of the entire opinion team, I'll just say thank you to all of you.
Thank you so much. You guys are both amazing, very, very successful session and a great evolution from the '23 session as well, too. So thank you so much for being with us. And go gophers. All right, team, that closes Item 3.04 and Section 3 in its entirety. We're going to pause on Section 4 and actually jump ahead to Section 5, our closing items. We do have some public commenters out there that have been waiting very patiently. And so I would like to open Item 5.01, our closing public comment, to give them the opportunity so that we may benefit from hearing from them.
Go ahead, you have time. Karen Seneck.
Welcome, Ms. Seneck. Thank you so much for being with us. Ms. Serek, thank you so much, Ms. Serek. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members and Superintendent Ernst. My name is Karen Serek, and I'm the parent of an incoming senior at the Gate Institute in HUG. And I'm here today because my son Julian, who has a 5.5 weighted GPA, has been denied the opportunity to take a TMCC dual-credit course this fall due to a scheduling conflict that would cause him to miss just four mornings of high school instruction over an entire semester. Julian has already completed several college-level courses. At this point in his academic path, the number of jumpstart courses that actually challenge and interest him, that remain for him to choose, is very limited. To complicate matters, students are being asked to select college-level courses that do not conflict with high school schedules, yet the high school schedule has not been made available to us. We're expected to avoid conflicts that we can't see, and then we're told that it's our fault when the conflicts occur. That's not just frustrating, it's unreasonable. Gifted students, like all students, require instruction that meets them where they are. When that doesn't happen, they disengage, not out of apathy, but because the system is failing to provide meaningful learning opportunities. That's what we're seeing here, not just with Julian, but with several other eager students at HUG who are facing the same dilemma. Let me be clear, we value and appreciate the services and support that our family has received through the gifted and talented department. Their work has played an integral role in the education and pursuits of all three of our children. That's why this decision feels so contradictory to the spirit of the program. The district claims to champion family partnerships and student-centered decision-making, but this situation reflects neither. We've advocated respectfully, we've communicated clearly and early, and yet we're being met with inflexibility that ultimately denies a student the opportunity to stay engaged and challenged in his learning. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for fair and responsive approach that recognizes that equity means meeting students at their level, even when that means doing something outside the usual routine. Please consider this decision. And more broadly, please take a hard look at how we are or are not supporting diligent learners who want to grow. If we don't make space for their curiosity and drive, we risk losing their engagement altogether. Thank you.
Ms. Serek, thank you very much for that public comment. Very much appreciate what you've shared and the areas that you have pointed out that we can absolutely work to refine. So we'll continue to dive into this. And Julian, fantastic job with... Yeah, fantastic job with those grades. But we will definitely be looking into this and really appreciate your perspective this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Julian Serek.
Hello, my name is Julian Serek, and I am entering my senior year at Proctor or HUG High School. I'm here today to commend the administration at HUG for educating me and many of my peers who wish to take college classes pertinent to our futures during high school on the priorities at HUG. Well, according to its mission statement, HUG High School creates college and career-ready individuals through the power of knowledge, integrity, and diversity while maintaining rigorous and supportive academics. The actions the school has taken have been in opposition to these stated goals, specifically their new policy not allowing students to take college classes with any conflicts with high school ones, no matter how minute. This policy, when combined with the school's A-day, B-day schedule, makes taking a college class with either in-person instructional time or a lab almost impossible. So it limits those who wish to take college classes to completely online ones. This personally affected me when I tried to take an online science class but was rejected because the class had a whole four in-person science labs throughout the semester. Another student wanted to take an organic chemistry class at TMCC, which would conflict with his computer science class at the end of the day for 45 minutes once every two weeks. Even after getting the okay from the computer science teacher, his form was rejected. Many, myself and many of my peers at the Gate Institute at HUG have run out of enough relevant classes on campus or fully online to fill up our schedules, and are thus forced to take classes that are either beneath our understanding or unrelated to our career goals. That is to say, wastes of our time. The reasonings given these restrictions are students leaving, missing, or coming in late to their high school classes because of attending off-campus dual-credit classes. While I understand the administration's concerns about attendance and accountability, the current policy takes a one-size-fits-it-all approach that punishes responsible and motivated students who are trying to take charge of their education. Instead of fostering independence, curiosity, and academic rigor, the very things HUG claims to value, this policy stifles growth and limits opportunity. It's also very discouraging to students for the administration to hinder students trying to achieve the school's set goals of college readiness and rigorous academics when the school has more pressing concerns like chronic absenteeism, groups of students roaming the halls during class time, and the bathroom smelling like weed. These problems stem from a lack of respect for HUG as an educational institution, and at least for me, that lack of respect comes from the school not putting education first. I ask you to request the HUG administration to reevaluate its policies for greater adherence to HUG's mission statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Julian, for your positive advocacy. You are a model of what we're trying to accomplish here in the Washoe County School District. So thank you so much.
Pablo Navadurin.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurin.
Hello, guys. Hello. So I want to make it clear, so with, you know, with the N5P, when a, when a school teacher faces school closure, we talk about school closure and consolidation, and not such about the designing and planning. We want to make sure the family can communicate with the plan, what the reason of a school closure means, decline enrollment, build a new school, but build learning. We want to make sure that a community-driven and based on culture, the culture, based on school culture, anything else. Because, and also, we want to talk about recreative naming community because we want to have this community opportunity to name the school. And not such the New Orleans School of Pine Campus, but Echo Lorder Campus and Matthew Campus, anywhere else who are facing school closure or consolidation. So we want to make sure to get to start naming community starting next year as well. So I want to make sure to communicate with Dawson Elementary School. If that feel okay, we're going to go to those school on your road, you know. Their school, their school enrollment is declining. We know, we know, I saw the number, and number don't lie. So that's a long time, 13 years ago, so. So make sure to get the communication changed and talk about difficult decision on school closure, how benefit of school closure, how elective there is, talk about let dev, what the new school look like. So give them, give me a community meeting. So if it doesn't want it, and then... So, give them, give me a community meeting, so if it doesn't want it, and then, then we, it is very difficult decision, so. So, I know they say, like, do you want to go Hidden Valley? Just go for it, but, you know, I know Hidden Valley is so low, so you never know, never know what happened to Echo Lord, so. I'm, I'm hap- I'm happy as a new community, I'm happy to take all Dawson community in, so. I love your cell clear, so. No, Nick, I don't want to hear any comment on, on your road area from Dawson community, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurin.
The board received emails from Veronica Koppel and Daniel Johnson.
Thank you so much. So, that'll close item 5.01, and we'll go back now to the section we skipped, which was section four, our reports. For item 4.01, as Annie shared with us, she is not with us today. It is actually her birthday, but we will see her in due time, along with Arabelle and Nicole as well, too, at their graduations. So, that closes item 4.01 and brings us now to item 4.02, our board reports. And we are gonna go ahead and start with Trustee Phoenix, who's with us on the line.
All right, good evening, everyone. So, the report I have here is I attended the Van Gort 25th Year Anniversary, Year Celebration. It was amazing to see the former teaching staff and Mrs. Van Gort there to be in attendance. Yeah, they did a phenomenal job organizing and kept the students in check. So, kudos goes to Principal Windsor for doing that. Didn't find the time, Council. It's somewhere, I don't know where it's at. Attended the Silver Dollar State Elementary groundbreaking event. I want to point out communication staff who organize and facilitates these types of events does a wonderful job keeping things organized on task, so I appreciate that. Went to the WAA Annual Conference for the first time, and again, it was amazing to hear that all the teachers in attendance received awards at the Atlantis Casino today. It was great. I really look forward to going to that again. Then I went to the Shaw Middle School, one of the largest populations in Native American middle schools here in the district. This year, Principal Kelly wrote, wrote a grant and allowed Ray Valdez, a Native American artist, to come work weekly with the students there. He got their input and they created a mural, so if you ever want to get down there, I can go check that out. Had my one-on-one evaluation, and I want to point out to the board and the district, thank you. As a new board member, I appreciate trying to make us the best board member that we can be in having that input. Then the, I got interviewed with the Washoe County School District Administrative Master Plan, so, from Canada Design, so that was great to hear that input, again, allowing the participation and being involved in that. And then I had my first graduation at TMCC High School, so that was awesome. Gerlach, that's a unique one, if you haven't gone to that one out there, it's all hands on deck, all the community came, and it was wonderful. Inspire Graduation was great, and the last one here was Innovations, and that was electrifying. That crowd was, they were just motivated and they're very happy. That certain group of folks that experienced those same life challenges all coming together was amazing. Other than that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, up next. I feel very fortunate to have been able to attend all the graduations so far, TMCC High School, Gerlach, K-12, Pacolo, Pre-K-12, Inspire/Washoe Academy, Innovations, and North Star, our online school. We have 13 graduations ahead, lots of partying to do, celebrating. I will say that by the end of all the, all the graduations, I think my hands are just a little swollen because you just can't stop clapping. I met with my Nevada Promise Scholar. I'm a mentee for Joey, and we've begun a nice journey mentoring her through TMCC, looking forward to going to her graduation someday. This morning, Trustee Westlake and I had the opportunity to thank and provide much appreciation for foster grandparents at one of their typical trainings. It was wonderful to see them in the audience. I, I will say just simply, our foster grandparents provide so much to our schools, many ways and many levels, and, and thank goodness that they're around. The Nevada Association of School Boards, as I mentioned previously, we continue to review the impacts of legislation. There, we're not finished, as Dylan Shaver said, but we will continue to review those. There's many bills that impact our frontier districts, and they're vitally important to their existence, number one, capital funding for building new schools. I visited AACT, had the opportunity to listen to project presentations and the portfolio work for juniors and seniors. They did some service learning presentations. Marvelous things going on at AACT, Academy of Arts Careers and Technology. Marcy Hers, the Passion Projects, those, those students do such a wonderful job, and they work on these Passion Projects throughout the year, and they really do have a passion for them. The Stead Groundbreaking. And then I was fortunate to be able to provide the board of trustees appreciation to Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. Please check out their toolkit. It's at washoeschools.net. They're doing absolutely wonderful work in expanding opportunities for learning about our safe and healthy schools. And then lastly, Gerlach has put out their inaugural, The Lion's Roar, their, their city newspaper. Yes, this is their first, so I got, I nabbed a copy of it for future reading. Thank you.
I, I've, I attended the TMCC and the Pacolo graduation. I unfortunately had some work things come up, so I couldn't attend Inspire or Innovations, but I hear they were beautiful. And I'm gearing up for all of the graduations coming up, including my own daughter's, on Saturday. So, our household has been quite busy getting a fifth grader, eighth grader, and twelfth grader all finished with their big, their big year. So, I think that's, that's all I've got, to be totally honest. It's been a busy mom week for me.
I visited Grace Warner Elementary School with Trustee Woodley to observe pre-case bed class. Principal Miller was very gracious and informative. The teachers are absolutely amazing, and one little girl, I, I'll never forget this, with curly blonde hair and the big, biggest blue eyes came up and gave me the best big hug ever. I mean, that hug is still with me. Attended the New Stead groundbreaking construction site. Stead had the first grade class sing two songs, and they are so, so cute. The WEA dinner with my hubby and fellow trustees. It was wonderful to celebrate our teachers. It was a masquerade theme, which was super fun. And then the next slide, so the teacher on the end is my dear friend, Ron DeWes. She's the kindergarten teacher at Sun Valley Elementary School. And when I visited that school for the first time, I asked her, what, what can I do? What can I do? And she said, I just want someone to read to my kiddos, and I've been doing it ever since, and I will not stop. Principal Bray at Sepulveda, she invited me, oh, there's the little first grader singing at the groundbreaking. The weather show was put on by Mrs. Johnson's third grade class. They rehearsed for four weeks only. They were absolutely adorable. The storyline was about a weather girl in search of an antique barometer, and in one of the songs, they sing raining cats and dogs, and they start throwing these stuffed animals in the air. It's hilarious. It is so cute. Grad walk at Kate Smith and Lincoln Park. These are signs the kiddos make for the seniors that come and do the grad walk at their school. TMCC High School graduation and Pacolo. And I have to say, I missed the first two years going to the Pacolo graduation, and I'm so thankful and grateful I got to go this year. Sammy, that I got to go up and give her diploma. Turns out, her parents and her live right around the corner from me, and she is just absolutely darling. Went to the Gerlach Kinder and Senior Graduation. Stacy Black is always gracious and the great, the best hostess ever. Inspire and Innovations and North Star. And the Innovations, it, it's gonna sit with me for a long time, some of the stories that the graduates told, absolutely amazing. And then, of course, with Trustee Nicolette at the Foster Grandparents Group today, and they are so appreciated.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. So, just to follow up, Trustee Westlake stated, we did visit Grace Warner Elementary, and I also want to acknowledge Don Angotti and Jennifer Van Tress as they joined us with Mr. Miller, the principal. We appreciate their attendance. Last week, I had my two-day quarterly NIAA meeting. I got to see the draft of NAC 385B, which is the result of the, the bill that was passed related to sanctioning of new sports by the association. So, they have a draft bill to, I'm sorry, a draft actual language to change NAC. So, we're gonna be seeing that they're here soon. Washoe County School District was acknowledged because we are leading the cause with regards to creating a new classification for our athletic directors. So, we're leading the state as a separate allocation, as a separate professional. And then, of course, we did our annual spring sports alignment as it relates to softball, baseball, golf, swimming, and diving, track and field, and all of our high schools that are 5A remain in 5A, and one high school remains in 3A for all those sports. And that's all I have.
All right, I'll wait a moment while JJ gets my pictures up. All right, I'll, I'll get to that. We'll watch that before I get to it. So, I'd like to first say congratulations to all of our graduating seniors and all the kindergartners, fifth and eighth graders moving up. I attended a Roy Gom Elementary School fundraiser at the Stremel Gallery. We all made art. It was remarkable. It was just such a special opportunity to help support the school in the development of art, which is one of the programs we were supporting. With the video, you saw the picture that Trustee Westlake showed. I've got the gif. I think it's real fun as you watch us bumping around. So, I was really pleased to attend the WEA Educator Awards with trustees Phoenix, Westlake, and Nicolette. It was amazing seeing all those educators honored, and we certainly had a lot of fun. My next photo is from the RTC event, so Kids Ride Free on the RTC. It started on June 7th. Now, all of our public education students can go online, or they also have paper passes available, and that public kickoff was great. And I'd like to formally recognize the special efforts of COO Adam Seersey, Washoe County Chair, Commission Chair Alexis Hill, Sparks Mayor Ed Lawson, the Director of Public Transit, Jim Gee at the RTC, and then also Commissioner Maya Luz Garcia. There were many people that made this happen, but it took a really special team to get it across the finish line, and this is an important opportunity for our kids. I attended the fifth grade graduation for the Jesse Beck Elementary School Dual Language Program. And then so far, I've attended the TMCC High School, Gerlach, Inspire Academy, Innovations High School, and North Star High School graduations. And in closing, I'll say that Pride Month is a time to celebrate the courage, strength, and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community while also recognizing the challenges that they continue to face. It reminds us that every person deserves to live openly, authentically, and without fear, no matter who they are or who they love. And supporting pride for me means standing up for dignity, challenging discrimination, and ensuring everyone feels safe, seen, and heard in our schools, workplaces, and community. And to humanize why this is important, it's not just a statement. I'm gonna share some data from the Trevor Project's 2024 U.S. National Survey on the mental health of LGBTQ+ young people. Thirty-nine percent of LGBTQ+ young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, and 12% did attempt or commit suicide. That's more than 10 for anyone that's following that. So, please, everyone, let's show up, speak out, and stand together because the lives of our children and our neighbors are at stake. Thank you. That concludes my board report and section 402 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to section 403, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Smith, and thank you, trustees. A very exciting time, of course, with our graduations. This is a real milestone for our students, and each of our graduations takes on its own special and unique way of celebrating the students. And all are very special to be a part of. I really appreciate everyone's attendance, and I appreciate how the schools are so thoughtfully putting together the graduations that are representative of the school and the community that they serve. And so, we're off to a great start. It'll be a busy season ahead. We start our Laller graduations tomorrow, and we're looking forward to all of those. So, it's a great time, a great culminating time of our school year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Superintendent. That closes item 4.03 and section four in its entirety, and we'll go back now to section five, which we had previously opened. We had already done item 5.01, so we will move on now to item 5.02, our next meeting announcement, which will be Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. And now, item 503 adjournment at 4:56 PM. Thank you.